Twenty-five regular city council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, we'll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members by position number. Please sit here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zorns. Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember Kerd.
Here.
Councilmember Mankie.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember Zorns, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. First up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda tonight? Seeing none. Public engagement opportunities. We have a blood drive at Bothell Police. Blood Works Northwest will be at the Bothell Police Community Room to host a mobile blood donation event this month, helping meet our region's blood supply needs. It's on September 8th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. We have Moonlight on Main. We can catch the last of Bothell's Summer Night Market Series, Moonlight on Main, the next two weekends, Saturdays through September 13th. Timing varies. And you can join us at Sustainamania, our annual sustainability festival returns at City Hall. There will be touch of trucks, live music, a repair cafe, food trucks, and a wide variety of local artisans, businesses, and organizations. It's September 20th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We have a few proclamations tonight. First up is National Diaper Need Awareness Month. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas national surveys report that nearly one in two families struggle with diaper need, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare and early education programs, which enable children to thrive and parents to work, and many parents struggling with diaper need report missing an average of five days of work each month due to insufficient supply of diapers. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention resulting in medical costs, and parents may be prevented from accessing childcare needed to go to work or school. And whereas Bothell is proud to be home to trusted community-based organizations, including KidVantage, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families and their work addressing diaper need, plays a critical role in supporting families, improving infant health and well-being, and advancing local and state economic growth. Now therefore I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the week of September 15th through 21st, 2025, as National Diaper Need Awareness Week, and encourage all to support organizations that collect and distribute diapers to families struggling with diaper need, so that all children and families in our community can thrive and reach their full potential. And I believe we have Jack from KidVantage here to accept.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jack Edgerton. I am the Executive Director of KidVantage. I am honored to be here today, as the City of Bothell recognizes Diaper Need Awareness Week, which will be coming up in the week of September 15th. Diaper need is a simple problem with the complex consequences for families. According to recent studies, one of two families in the United States struggles to provide enough diapers to keep their baby or toddler clean, dry, and healthy. In the first half of 2025, KidVantage has already provided diapers and other children's essentials to 211 Bothell children one or more times. These kids received 1,275 orders of basic needs goods like clothing, hygiene, and car seats, as well as 10,500 diapers. To ensure we are reaching those families most in need, KidVantage partners with nonprofit governmental organizations already serving kids, as well as nonprofits. In Bothell, we are proud to work with Friends of Youth, Hope Link, the North Shore School District, Kindering, King County Public Health, Seattle Indian Health Board, Swedish Hospital, and The Grassroots Project. All these agencies work with KidVantage to make sure that kids in Bothell have what they need to thrive. On behalf of all of the families struggling to make sure that they have sufficient diapers to meet their children's need, I would like to thank you for this proclamation, as well as the City of Bothell's support of KidVantage. I know I'd like to now introduce one of our Board of Directors members, Cara Durbin, who is a resident of the City of Bothell, to share a few more thoughts.
Thanks, Jack. He's always hard to follow. Good evening. My name's Cara Durbin. I am a resident of Bothell. My family and I love living here, and I just really wanted to say that I really appreciate the support and partnership with KidVantage. This organization is really special to me and to my family in the ways that it makes sure that kids in our community, and there are so many, have the basic needs met so they can be kids and they can thrive. And so I am also a mom of three. I had planned to be a mom of two, but I got surprised with twins, so that's how the math gets to three. It's a longer story, but I remember quite well the financial strain of having two babies in diapers at the same time. It was a notable part of my budget, but I had family support. Both of my husband and I worked, and I know so many other families that it was much harder for. And KidVantage just plays such an important role in partnering with local agencies and making sure that kids have what they need to be safe and dry. And so just really appreciate you recognizing this, supporting KidVantage's mission and the agencies, so that we can help kids have what they need. So, thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have National Preparedness Month. Whereas National Preparedness Month is observed throughout the United States each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies and disasters to keep families and communities safe. And whereas the City of Bothell recognizes that natural and human-made disasters of all sorts may occur at any time and cause significant disruptions and impacts to the Bothell community. And whereas research shows informed community preparedness is critical to reducing loss of life, limiting economic and societal impacts, and accelerating recovery during disasters. And whereas fostering a culture of preparedness within our Bothell community also helps protect everyone's sense of safety, belovedness, and belonging. And whereas community members can take proactive steps to prepare for potential emergencies and disasters by knowing their risks, making emergency plans and disaster supply kits for their families, and taking action to sign up for public alerts. Now therefore I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Preparedness Month in the City of Bothell, and encourage all community members to make an emergency plan for their household, including communication strategies, meeting and evacuation points, special needs and pet care considerations, and emergency contacts, to assemble and maintain a disaster supply kit, and to sign up for Alert King County and Snohomish County Alerts, free regional early warning and notification systems that deliver critical emergency information right to your phone. And now we have somebody who no doubt has done all three of these things, our own Colby Kavanaugh here to accept.
For those who don't know me, my name is Colby Kavanaugh. I'm the Emergency Manager here at the City. Council is no stranger to emergencies here, neither is the community. We appreciate this proclamation and the continued support of preparedness in the city. We would really like to encourage this month specifically that our community members sign up and register for emergency alerts. That's going to be the quickest way that you receive emergency information that is trusted and vetted, and that'll come directly from the city. There are two options here in the City of Bothell. The primary option is Alert King County, and we utilize that to alert both in Snohomish and King County portions of our city. And then we also have availability for SnoCo alerts, and that is primarily for the Snohomish County side, however, we would use that in redundancy. Those alerts can be registered for in those systems where you work, where you recreate. So if you have kids in school district other than where the county you reside, or maybe the community members work in a different county, we encourage them to check that out as well, because emergency alerts are really that frontline before you're going to hear maybe through social media or other channels. So, thank you again for your support. We really appreciate it, and we hope that you all have a kit. If you don't, please reach out. Any of our community members are welcome to reach out to us as well. We have plenty of resources we're willing to share, and we'll actually sit down with you and discuss how to build a kit in an affordable manner. So, thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have National Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas suicide remains the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, and over 49,000 people died by suicide in 2024, and estimated one death every 11 minutes. And whereas suicide was the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 14, and 25 and 34, the third leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 15 and 24, and the fourth leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 35 and 44. And whereas suicide rates in Washington State have increased by 12% over the last 20 years and have been higher than the national average for more than 10 years. And whereas suicide and suicide attempts affect the health and well-being of friends, loved ones, coworkers, and the community. When people die by suicide, their surviving family and friends may experience prolonged grief, shock, anger, guilt, symptoms of depression or anxiety, and even thoughts of suicide themselves. And whereas the stigma associated with mental illness and suicidality works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking lifesaving help and further traumatizes survivors of suicide. And whereas the power of sharing personal stories about mental health and suicide fosters understanding, breaks down stigma, and creates pathways to healing, and a peer support plays a critical role in recovery by offering hope, connection, and the reminder that no one has to face their struggles alone. And whereas community-based organizations such as NAMI Eastside play a vital role in fighting stigma, engaging families, peers, and community members in suicide prevention efforts, and ensuring that those affected know they are not alone and have access to support and resources. Now therefore I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim September 7th through 13th, 2025, as National Suicide Prevention Week, because addressing the mental health needs of seniors, adults, youth, children, and families is fundamental to building Bothell's beloved community. And I believe we have Mark from NAMI here to accept.
All right, I think we're live. Good evening. I'm Mark Uvman, the Executive Director of the National Alliance on Mental Illness for East King County, or Eastside. Thank you, Mayor Thompson and council members, for the opportunity to speak tonight and recognizing the National Suicide Prevention Week here in Bothell. This proclamation affirms that addressing the mental health needs of adults, youth, and families is fundamental to building the beloved community that Bothell seeks. The stigma surrounding mental illness and suicidality continues to sound to many people who are struggling. That is why the power of sharing our personal stories matters so deeply. I want to especially thank Councilmember Alderks for sharing her story about how mental health and suicide has impacted her family. Your courage, vulnerability, and openness is an incredible example of what each of us can do to support folks impacted by mental health conditions. When people speak openly about mental health and suicide, we break down stigma, foster understanding, and open pathways to healing. Peer support is equally vital. It reminds us that no one has to face their struggles alone, and that recovery is possible when we walk together. Community-based organizations like ours play a crucial role in this work. We fight stigma, provide education, lead peer support programs, and engage families, schools, and workplace in suicide prevention efforts. We are committed to ensuring that everyone knows they are not alone and has access to resources that can save lives. I encourage the council and the community to engage with this topic by attending one of our upcoming free educational opportunities, like Mental Health First Aid and Safe Talk, which offer tools and strategies to support friends, neighbors, and family members who may be struggling with suicidality or experiencing a mental health crisis. On behalf of our members at NAMI Eastside and all those affected by suicide and mental health, I want to thank you for this proclamation, which sends a clear message that Bothell is a city where mental health matters and where every individual deserves support, dignity, and hope. Let us use this week as more than awareness. It is a catalyst for conversation, compassion, and collective action. Together, we can build community where no one feels alone, where stigma is replaced with understanding, and where help and hope are always within reach. I'd like to introduce Janavi, who is the President of the University of Washington Bothell, NAMI on Campus, who has some words to share. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Janavi, and I'm a student from University of Washington Bothell Campus, UW-B. I'm a President of NAMI on Campus at UW-B, which is affiliated with NAMI Eastside Suicide Prevention. It is very unfortunate that Washington's suicide rate has increased by 12% over the past 20 years. As the proclamation mentions, we have to work together to reduce stigma around mental illness. Spreading awareness will help make it easy for everyone to talk about their personal stories about mental health. My team at UW-B organizes events to help students, such as for reducing stress during finals and providing information about mental health, resources that NAMI Eastside and UW-B provides. Suicide is the third leading cause of death for ages 15 to 24, and second for ages 25 to 34. That is scary and upsetting. Based on these numbers, someone we know might be experiencing a mental health issue and need help, and we need to do our part in getting them the right resources. For that, all of us need to know how to help them, when or if they reach out to us. I believe making September 7th to 13th Suicide Prevention Week in Bothell is a great start. Let's all work together to help our community. Thank you.
All right, next up is public comment. The City has accepted public comments in writing, as well as sign-ups, for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and our part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make notes of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We received one written comment from Kathy Fabraci regarding immigration, neighbors, protecting them from ICE. You've all received that email today, and that is all I have signed up for this evening. However, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, please step to the podium. You'll have three minutes. And we don't have anybody in the virtual audience.
It's Sunny. People have things to do. All right.
Thank you.
In that case, we'll move on to the City Manager Report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome back to City Council. I hope your recess was restful and probably was still plenty busy. I know we've had a lot going on in Bothell regardless of our Tuesday night, so whether you were able to head to one of the Moonlight on Main events, or attend Summer Nights in Bothell, or many of the other things that seem to be going on in the month of August, I hope you had a restful break. The main two things that I would have as updates might be stepping on council committee and community reports and conversations. I'll be delicate, but just note that at our last meeting, council did inform a subcommittee of council members to transmit a letter on behalf of the council of Snohomish County, just to confirm that did happen. And then also, last week, the Deputy Mayor and I attended a housing convening at the Lieutenant Governor's Office, so maybe have some updates on that. But otherwise, you'll be hearing from me a lot during the study session tonight, as we'll be providing an update on the council vision progress and specifically on the priorities. So, I'll save additional commentary until then.
All right, moving on to council committee reports, community reports, and conversations. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager, for not doing what we agreed upon and you saying anything about it. So, I'm going to say something, and please plug in as needed. So, last week, was it last week? Last week. Wow. We met with Lieutenant Governor Hacks, invited representatives from a bunch of cities from around the state to attend a meeting at his office, and we thought it was good to actually be there and have, it's easier to have. Even though there was a hybrid conversation, they had a hybrid option. It was better for us just to be there, just to have, for the dynamics of conversations. As you all saw, and probably saw in the email that the City Manager sent, we don't have much to contribute to the situation, because this was, the meeting was basically a requirement from the legislature. They passed a request of the Lieutenant Governor to hold this meeting so that he can gather information that he will give back to the legislature, so that they can make a decision. And basically, the idea is that the question is, is it, how feasible is it to convert commercial spaces to residential? And commercial means office buildings, or strip malls, or any land that is not designated as residential already today. So, that was the question. And Bothell, we don't have that many options here, so it wasn't really, didn't really pertain to us. But the biggest takeaway for me was Nicholas Carr, he's the Senior Housing Policy Advisor for Governor Ferguson. And it's as a ex, as a techie, I guess, ex or current, doesn't matter. The idea was they wanted to run an experiment, a pilot, I call the experiment. And it's for a certain period of time, the details are still to be decided by the end of the month. More information is going to come out from the Governor's Office. But the idea is to select multiple cities that will go about selecting multiple construction projects with certain builders and developers, so that an assessment can be made about affordability and what would it actually take to build more, quote-unquote, "affordable" housing, which I'm hoping that we'll actually define what affordable housing means as part of this pilot. So, that was the biggest takeaway, and the biggest thing that I really took. The second, the secondary thing that was good, because the question was put out to the attendees online and in person is, was, what things can the legislature do to encourage more building? The biggest thing that came out was energy codes need to be updated, because those were expensive on building. And the second thing was, was that environmental code or something?
I think fire code was the other one that came up predominantly.
Yeah. Do you have anything else to add?
I mean, you're doing great. No, I think those were a lot of the main themes, and I think even at one point, the Lieutenant Governor had to shift things away from, a lot of the conversation was around historic buildings, which is where a lot of the energy code came into, of like changing the use from an office building to a residential building, and the energy capture was pretty significant. And I think that part of the conversation then shifted to as well of trying to find a way of how to capture the environmental positive impact of reuse of a building, as opposed to what you might see in terms of if a building had to be demolished, so that it could be rebuilt in a more efficient way. So, some of those conversations, I think, was the feedback that was coming from jurisdictions. I think the only thing I would add is that in the charge to the Lieutenant Governor and the budget was, the study needs to, of the current conditions, needs to be completed by December 1st. And local government is a stakeholder, but they are also reaching out to developers and housing authorities and different groups as well, to primarily look at what are the barriers of producing housing in areas that are currently zoned for commercial and office space. And again, just as the Deputy Mayor said, and just to reiterate, part of what makes it a lower issue in Bothell is that we already do have flexible zoning, and so there isn't a zoning barrier of where things can be built, but there are some of the practical issues of change of use and if it's appropriate. But we also, we're currently in a position where our occupancy levels are not necessarily that high compared to some other places, too, the types of businesses that are looking to be here, or even in our commercial space. It's usually, as we learned in that economic vitality study, it's more of the type or size of space that's a barrier, but not that people aren't looking for it. We definitely have a lot of competition. So, it was interesting here, the conversation, and I think, I agree with the Deputy Mayor, that the Governor's proposed pilot is something that we should keep watch of to see what that is, and intend to bring that back when details do emerge. We were told four weeks, let's say we double it, somewhere in that range, bring that information back to council and see if that's something to pursue.
That's it. Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an update from the North King County Coalition on Homelessness that met a couple of days after our last meeting. So, while this information might be about a month old, it's still relevant to our community, especially since KCRHAJ came and presented to us an overview of the point-in-time count. I don't know if they're going to be coming to Bothell, like will they visit each city to give an update, or? I have...
We could follow up with them if there's interest.
Okay. But some, like, overview of that in some notes that I took. 71% of unhoused people in King County are single adult males, which really, I think, is a sobering statistic and shows kind of who is most in need of support. 51% of those who are unhoused are experiencing disability. That is a more common reason than substance use disorder or serious mental illness. 17% of people who are unhoused in King County are, that's a result of domestic violence. Shelter beds are still woefully not available. There's 9.6 people for every shelter bed in North King County, because there's only five organizations providing shelter services in the entire county. So, some recommendations, they're looking to increase the number of shelter beds, provide ongoing disability and mental health services, which is something that our council's done, worked a lot to address, prevention strategies for young people, particularly that transition from foster care into homelessness. It's all too common. And then continuing tracking data and demographics. I also have an update from a presentation from Connections as well. I was attending a Newsom meeting, the North Urban Human Services Alliance, and I asked the question, how many people who have visited Connections in Kirkland were from Snohomish County zip codes? And I got that information today, and it's over 500 people in the last year from Snohomish County have, you know, crossed the county line to access services. And that's fantastic, because we're not just providing care to our immediate community on the King County side of Bothell, but also into Snohomish County as far as Marysville. So, people, the word is getting out. And also, in Snohomish County, there will be two crisis stabilization centers opening in the next year, one in Lynwood and one in Everett. So, that work is continuing on both sides of the county line. Thank you for listening to my update.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. During the break, Councilmembers Kerd and Mankie and I did work on the letter to the Snohomish County Council, and I appreciate their teamwork. I also want to especially thank Councilmember Kerd, and I wanted to sneak in before he didn't take as much credit as he should have, because he drafted a really great letter that needed very few edits, taking all of our feedback into account from that agenda item, while he was preparing for a lot of other things during the break. So, just super shout-out to Councilmember Kerd there.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that. Thank you very much to Councilmember Kerd for taking on the bulk of that work, putting together a very well-written letter that needed very few updates and made it very easy to all agree on what we're sending forward. So, I appreciate that. I did have one community update tonight, and I did make some notes on my computer, but my computer has been in a 45-minute update doom loop. It doesn't want to come back from the August break, so I'm going to do it live, as they say. Some sad news, the end of July, Uncle Pizza, from Uncle Pizza's Pizzeria, did pass away. He'd been battling cancer for about 10 years, and he, his life ended unfortunately. So, they had a time to honor him at the beginning of August, which is great. Uncle Pizza, for those that don't know, he's very, he was very active in the community. He loved students, especially North Shore School District, gave many teenagers their very first job at the pizzeria, taught them... very first jobs at the pizzeria, taught them work ethic and had fun at work and did some really great, great work. He owned a couple of Little Caesar's franchises in the community before he founded Uncle Pizza's Pizzeria. And I've only had one interaction with him. I went in to pick up a pizza one night with my daughter and he was very quick to chat us up from behind the counter. And I was thinking, that guy looks like the guy in the box. I didn't realize who he was at first until I got home and I was like, oh, that was Uncle Pizza. So it sounded like from all the Facebook comments that people had very similar experiences with Uncle Pete. He just was a, like a, a community member that was very well-known, very well-loved, and he lived a really good life. And one of his last messages is on Facebook, one of his grandchildren read it to the community, and it was encouraging young people to stay strong and to, you know, fight the tough battles and continue forward. So if you want to read or listen to, to that, you can jump on Facebook and go to Uncle Pizza's Pizzeria's Facebook page and, or go to Instagram, I believe it's on there too. So just wanted to honor him. Wife, wife well-lived, great community member, serving our community, encouraging our community, and loving on our kids. So thanks to his family, and we look forward to them continuing to stay in our community and carrying on his legacy.
Thanks for bringing that up. We were, we've been going to first Little Caesar's and then Uncle Pizza's for a long time. Both my parents worked, so Friday was pizza night because I think they were pretty done. And the story that stands out to me is my father started using a wheelchair at some point and he couldn't drive for quite a while. And he couldn't also, as himself, meet the minimum order for delivery. And he ran into Uncle Pizza once and told him about it, and he made a note on my dad's account that basically Eric gets whatever he needs delivered, whether it's a $5 sandwich or a pizza or whatever. And that meant a lot to my dad, who this was kind of before DoorDash was super popular, and he was just kind of stuck at home. And it, that's just one small example of little ways that he did a lot of things in our community that meant a lot to people. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
I was also really touched by Pete's grandson's message to the community. It was really, really beautifully done. And one of the ways that the community was encouraged to, to remember Pete was by donating to Cocoon House for his ongoing service to youth who are experiencing homelessness in Snohomish County. So if, if you want to honor him, that was one of his final requests, was donations to Cocoon House. And of course, always, you know, show them some support. They've got really good pizza.
Moving on to projected agenda discussion. Do councilmembers have any items we'd like to bring up? There's a small spider running around up here in case anybody's wondering why we're giggling and not talking and looking around.
Jenny is thinking of becoming Spider Woman, so.
Now that we're done talking about Marvel Comics, I would love to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Curd.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Curd and a second from councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Mankie?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcovra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember Zorn's absent and excused.
All right. We're to ordinances and resolutions. City manager, Standard.
Thank you, Mayor. And we do have one item under this topic tonight, and it is a, a proposed update to the Bothell Municipal Code, Chapter 90470, Drug Loitering. This is, well, many times we have updates that come through a study session to, before they, they come to you for action. This one is hopefully fairly straightforward, some, some minor updates, but council always has the opportunity to ask questions, say we need more time, or obviously vote yes or no. So those are all tools in your tool belt about tonight. So in order to help explain the proposed changes and walk you through what they mean and also to answer any of your questions, we're joined tonight by deputy chief Beard, who will be leading the presentation. She's also joined by our city attorney, Eileen Kiefer, in the event that there's any additional questions. So I'll turn things over to the deputy chief.
I passed the first test. I got the microphone working. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm Julie Beard, your deputy chief of police, and I have Eileen with me to save the day when I have legal questions. Today, we're going to talk about an ordinance amending BMC 9470, Drug Loitering Prohibited. Tonight, we're asking you to adopt an ordinance amending this. It, the master chapter is called Stay Out of Drug Areas. We're specifically going to be talking about drug loitering. I want to talk about the timeline of how we got here tonight. In February 2017, city council approved an ordinance codifying the municipal code for stay out of drug areas and drug loitering. In October 2017, it was amended with ordinance 2226. We have been using this ordinance until June of this year. Where a pro temp judge released a ruling that overturned the existing definitions, addressed two things, and we're going to talk about those tonight. That brought us to tonight, where I'm asking you to approve three changes to the law. Wanted to give you a snapshot of how we use this municipal code. So we pulled numbers from the 13 months before this was overruled, and we also can talk about three years of data of drug loitering in the city of Bothell. So from May 1st, 2024 to May 31st, 2025, we made 73 total arrests of drug loitering in the city of Bothell. Those arrests were of 66 people, which means we do have people who commit the violation two or three times. Over the last three years, we had 209 arrests with, if I get my numbers correctly, 12 persons committed that violation. So our recidivism rates are pretty stable over the last three years. It's important for us to note that 20% of those charges included additional non-drug-related arrests. Those included things like domestic violence, vandalism, weapons violations, harassment, and theft. So when officers make a drug loitering arrest, there's often other charges occurring at the same time in those contexts. To tell the story a little bit, these arrests are typically happening in public shopping areas frequented by families, most usually grocery stores in our city. So if that gives you a little bit of picture of what we're looking at, when we make these contacts, these 73 arrests are mostly there. There's two paths of resolution we usually see in these cases. So there's traditional criminal court, which has, sorry, spaced on the word for a second. Traditional court would have penalties such as probation, fines, jail time. We also use therapeutic courts, and so I think it's important to note, in 2025, Bothell is the adult recovery court, the drug court, a law enforcement liaison for Snohomish County. So your Bothell police officers are actually at drug court every week in Everett, and then they're doing the monthly home checks as well. And we'll do that for the end of this year. So in Snohomish County, if you commit a felony that is some substance use disorder related, you can go to the therapeutic courts. So it's important to understand that some of these arrests are related to felonies, are related to substance use disorder, and then do go through therapeutic courts. So drug loitering charges can escalate into that court. So we do see people through the whole path, and it's actually our officers making the contacts and this year seeing them through the entire therapeutic court process. Want to talk about where we are today. On June 5th, we received this ruling from the prosecutor's office. We immediately ceased using the drug loitering BMC. So all arrests stopped at that point. We issued an order out and it was not enforced from that point on. We've quashed every arrest warrant related to that case, so there's no active arrest warrants. Everything is on hold. We immediately started conducting a thorough review with legal, the prosecutor's office, and our police staff. We spent a few months going through, trying to solve any issues, take a good look at the law, and that brings us to today, where I have three proposals for you to amend. The judge issued two pieces of his ruling and staff added a third. So I want to get the language correctly so I don't misquote the judge. The first change was to the definition of loiter. Previously, it was to stand about or to proceed with many stops. The judge said that was too narrow because it didn't include someone sitting in their vehicle. And as you can imagine, people often use narcotics in their vehicle. So a lot of our contacts were indeed people sitting in the grocery store in their car. So we addressed that by defining it as now, to linger or stay in a public place or area without a valid reason or purpose. So that addressed the first part of the judge's ruling. The second part of the judge's ruling was actually that one part of the law was too constitutionally broad. Previously, the law said any public or private place. We tried to add some specificity to that, and so you'll see it in front of you. It's a little bit longer, so I'm going to let you read it. But that specificity went through legal with the prosecutor's office and our legal advisor to try to define this in a way that is not constitutionally broad, it's very clear. The third change we made at the request of staff, you'll often hear intent described in law. We wanted to make intent clear in this case so that officers knew how to define their contacts and how to define their charging documents. So at the request of our police staff, we've added knowingly and in a manner reasonably believed to help describe intent when officers are making these contacts. These three changes are the amendment that you have before you. So tonight, we are considering, we are asking you to consider adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 904070, Stay Out of Drug Areas for Drug Loitering and the definition of loiter. And that's what I have.
Does anybody have any questions for the deputy chief?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is, this was, I mean, the request is clear, what you're asking us. I think that's unclear to me is what did the judge, did the judge throw out like the whole, the whole chapter in the BMC? Or did the, the judge pick and choose things and we decided, you know what, let's review the whole thing anyways, might as well?
Good evening, council. As you know, Eileen Kiefer, Madrona Law. I serve as your city attorney. The judge's ruling was focused just on two specific portions of BMC, Chapter 9.04. First was definition of loiter. I think that's in subsection 010. So they held that that definition was too narrow. And then also in the, the actual crime portion, in 070, drug loitering, he said that the, the definition was too broad. And I think he was also focused on, it previously, public or private place. You note that the definition now has really been tweaked to, to say, you know, public places. It's commercial areas, it's parking lots, buildings, gives examples. And then there's also really a focus, this was not something the judge asked for, but I also want to explain that there is a focus on trying to strike a balance between people who have a reason, you know, a reason to be there, right? Like I could be in the parking lot waiting on my spouse to pick up a prescription. That's loitering. It might be in a stay out of drug area, but it wouldn't be drug loitering unless it also meets all of these other criteria that we have put in here. Got a, a knowing requirement, meaning you have to have a certain amount of intent. And it really, I think, hopefully helps guide both the officers and the public in knowing, hey, these are the kinds of behaviors that do constitute drug loitering while not penalizing, while not accidentally sweeping in anybody who might be there because they're waiting for their spouse to pick up a prescription.
Thank you. I, I think I get the, the clarification, the request on how it's actually better now. The question, because since 19, 19, 2017, this law has been on the books, and this was June or whenever the, the trial occurred was the first time we actually faced such a thing? And was it the first time this chapter was brought into question?
Okay. So I think you're, you're asking about the entire chapter of like soda zones, if somebody can still have a problem if they have a stay out of drug or order from the court. And so the, the rest of the chapter was not, is still valid. It's not, it wasn't overturned by the judge. It's just drug loitering, just that one. So this is really kind of a narrow, a narrow fix.
And this was the only time we faced such a case about this specific part of the chapter, then I'm assuming?
Yes, to my knowledge.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I guess the first time it comes up, that's why it's the first time it's coming up right now for the past eight years. I mean, I guess that's the, the question. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate some of the additional context to the AB, especially the, how it's historically been used. And so I, I like data. And so if you don't have this data, it's fine, I understand, but maybe you are able to access it. Of those, you cited 73 arrests in the last year. Of those, how many were referred to therapeutic court?
I don't have that data. I am working actually on getting it from the ARC court right now.
Okay. That's great. It'd be really, really awesome to hear, you know, recovery is, can be a long and complicated process for people, but sometimes there are some wins where, where people are able to, you know, and they'll say, the, the best thing that happened to me was that I got arrested and I had to face some accountability. So when we offer opportunities for therapeutic court and recovery, so if there are any, if there are any positive outcomes, it'd be really great to hear that not just that we're trying to like keep streets safe and, and like push people out that we think are dangerous, but also that when people are being dangerous, we're actively seeking to help them. So.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mankie.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you talk a little bit about the knowingly part? I'm curious about that because it seems harder to prove that somebody is knowingly doing something or known something unless they're told previously. So I'm curious if you can just kind of explain the knowingly part that we added in?
Shall we tag team?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll give you the law part, and she can give you the implementation, and that's, hopefully will be helpful. So knowingly is the, the, there's a Latin term for it, it's called mens rea, and it just means your, your mental state. Certain crimes will have different, different intent requirements, knowingly, willingly. There's also something called strict liability crimes, which means you don't have to, we don't have to prove that you knew anything or you had any particular intent. And really what it is, is it's, it's making the government as, as prosecution, as the ones with the, the burden of proof. It's just another hurdle for us to prove that this person was knowingly drug loitering. And so it's, knowingly is actually a pretty high intent burden. And so one of the things we've put in is that the, the officers can kind of use each other's knowledge as well. That especially comes into play when you have folks who are like repeat offenders. So if you have a straight, stay out of drug area order already, or you're a repeat offender, I think it's going to be a lot easier for us to say, yeah, you, you were knowingly drug loitering. You know, because we've, we've caught you on this before. So, so it's really just an intent requirement and just certain crimes require us to prove a certain kind of intent. That's the legal explanation, but the DC Baird can help, help explain how that comes into practice when PD is out there enforcing these.
It's a great question because it requires a lot of articulation. And so criminal history would be a piece of it, interviewing and interrogation, asking, why are you here? I'm here to meet somebody to buy drugs. Some people do share their assorted details with us. We would also need to describe symptoms of intoxication are written into the BMC, so we can articulate that they're showing signs of intoxication, whether that be speech or physical symptoms. We are able to look into the vehicle from outside, and you can see oftentimes that there's foil or drug paraphernalia implements. All of that would need to be articulated. I will refer to the case that actually started all of this because it's a really good example of this. There were actually two people in the vehicle. One individual said they were there to work at the retail store. One individual was there with drug paraphernalia and behaviors indicating that. The officer released the person going to work immediately. There was no, no charges filed. The other person, they were, will articulate signs and symptoms of recent drug use. They were surrounded by paraphernalia. So the intent requires us to lay out a lot when we articulate the case.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. Second question, I know sometimes when laws are found to be not as they should be, sometimes you have to go all the way back several years and vacate things. Do we have to do anything like that, or is that not part of that process?
We did not at this point. We've been in ongoing talks with the prosecutor's office as to how far we need to extend back. At this time, their recommendation is that we just vacated, are we questioning outstanding warrants and we ceased using the case moving forward? Because none of the cases before had been challenged, that's, it's an ongoing discussion.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I think the changes all make sense, and thank you for this work.
Go for it. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. One question I have, I had is between, so the first question is, which hopefully is the easy one, this, if, if we all vote yes and it passes, the changes will be immediate? Not as easy, I guess.
Not, not quite as easy. I think, I think we do have a 30-day effective date on that because there was, I think, some uncertainty as to whether this is subject to referendum. So we didn't, wanted to err on the side of caution. So if I recall correctly, we did have the extended effective date on this one.
Can you explain the referendum part?
That's probably best for a follow-up conversation, just because that is a, that is a long conversation. It doesn't come up very often, but in short, Bothell has adopted the initiative in referendum powers. Certain ordinances that you pass are challengeable within 30 days. So most ordinances are going to be a five-day after publication effective date. On occasion, we're going to give you a different effective date, and that's why.
I see. So the 30 days is to give somebody an opportunity to challenge it, I guess, and then, or bring, ask for a referendum, is that, is that what?
Yeah, again, we weren't, we weren't entirely sure this would even be subject to referendum, but we were going to err on the side of caution on this.
That makes sense. It's a, it's a big deal with all the numbers that were mentioned. The other question I have is between, you said the beginning of June 5th was the date where it ceased the work. How many potential cases could have been made, I guess, at that time, between then and now for like two months now, three months?
It would be an absolute guess.
Okay.
If I were, we average about 73 a year, so two months, a portion of that.
Okay.
And I could not tell you because I didn't break it down by the month if summer months are busier.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. For later follow-up, could we get more information on the referendum and what types of changes are subject to that and who can, like, that sounds fascinating to me, but I realize it's not a right now thing.
I'm happy to follow up with an email on that. There's a whole publication on it, so I'm, but I'm going to give you guys like two paragraphs because you don't need, and a link to the publication in case you are, you know, sleepless at night and need, need good material to put you to sleep.
Thank you.
I will say, as a bonus, when council members, if you're ever asked what the difference between a resolution and ordinance are, that's one of them. So resolutions are just expressions of the council as well, and they go into effect immediately. And as the attorney mentioned, ordinances always have a, have a clock. So yeah, it is, is a good one to know and whether it be an elementary school classroom asking you or a resident in the, in the grocery store. It's a good, good way of helping to articulate because they are the laws that affect people who are here.
Thank you for coming and entertaining our questions. I don't have any after all this, so I'm going to kick it over to the city clerk. Actually, I, I need a motion. It's, it's been a while, I'm rusty. I would love to entertain a motion. Councilmember Kerd?
I move to approve the ordinance amending Bothell Municipal Code, Chapter 9.04, point oh seven, oh, drug loitering prohibited.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Kerd and a second from Councilmember Manki. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City nun, city clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no on a call your name, Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you, and thank you. All right, next up, we have Agenda Bill 25150 about our November 4th meeting, city manager.
Briefly, I'll just note that if you're counting, there's only about 10 city council meetings left in the year 2025. So every week's a premium to continue, to continue the work of representing the community. With November having both a election night and then followed by the following Tuesday being a federal holiday, November council schedule has been a question for a while. And so we can adequately plan what, what goes where. Our city clerk is here tonight to seek direction. I'll turn it over to Laura if there's anything to add. Otherwise, I think this is primarily a council conversation.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add except that we sent out an email just giving the council some choices, whether to have the meeting and end early on November 4th by 8 o'clock, or reschedule it for one of the following days, Tuesday, October 28th, Wednesday, November 5th, Wednesday, November 12th, and Tuesday, or Tuesday, November 25th. The top choices were to conduct the meeting on the 4th as scheduled, but end by 8:00 P.M. or have it on Tuesday, the 28th. So tonight, we're just asking for council's direction on that, which, which meeting do you want to have? And I'll open it for discussion.
You guys are basically just like figure it out, you can talk here. Cool. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Is two hours enough for the meeting on the 4th if we do it on the 4th?
Yeah, I mean, yes, we will keep it very limited if we decide to have it on the 4th.
Would that affect the future meetings? Would it affect the other meetings, like the whole schedule because there's 10 meetings?
Well, because November 11th is Veterans Day and we are closed, you know, we could also have a meeting on Wednesday, the 12th, November 12th, if, if we needed. But we are trying to just really plan out those meetings so that we're not dumping everything on the last meeting of November.
Could we perhaps start at 5:00 on Election Day, start an hour early? Still get three hours in? I don't know if that works for everybody else, but I'd be open to that.
We, we can certainly do that. We would advertise it as a special meeting starting early at 5:00. So if, and that's if folks can get here.
Why don't we just do the Wednesday and not have to worry about it?
It's easier for me to meet on Tuesday because I like already blocked those out. But I'd rather do Tuesday from 5:00 to 8:00, or Tuesday, Tuesday, the 4th from 5:00 to 8:00, or Tuesday, October 28th, personally.
Tuesday, October 28th, sounds nice.
We could dress in our Halloween costumes?
I mean, Rami's in.
I knew it.
Does anybody have beef with Tuesday, October 28th? Does that provide, is that problematic?
It can be, it can be complicated for, for my schedule. I, I would prefer to meet at a regular time on, on November 4th and try to follow, finish up by 8:00. I also know that if we go longer, it's not because of the planning of our clerk and executive's office, it's because we talked a lot and we did it to ourselves. So I'm, I'm open to, yeah, open to doing it that way.
Can we, since we have a little bit of time before this happens, can we try to like put one extra item on every agenda between here and there and see if we can get through them?
Sometimes there's a sequencing of, of items that is really where that goes. Your end of the year, you have a couple of things that statutorily you have to do in November, including like the mid-by budget. So there are some things that, that can't come early and there are others that can. I mean, we can always, we can always look at that and essentially that's what we would be doing as we, like even if we're trying to make do with two meetings in November. So I can't say that that necessarily will do it or not, but, I mean, yeah, you know, special meetings are always a thing if like we are running into a situation like then we have to huddle. It's, November is always a challenging month too because there's a significant holiday and people traveling at the end of the month as well. And so this, it's not unusual for this to come up, so.
I would prefer to keep it on the 4th as well.
I haven't heard anybody say right now that they don't want it on the 4th. That seems to be everybody's first choice.
I don't want it on the 4th, but I don't have the numbers and that's okay.
Okay. And that's democracy.
Yep. I think we're doing it on the 4th.
And begin at 5:00?
Can you make that work?
I, I could make it work. I would prefer to start at 6:00 though.
Let's do two to six.
Start at 6:00. Okay, perfect. All right, we'll keep it to two.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Way to go, doing that quickly. Because next up, we have a study session. So let's take, it is 7:00. Let's reconvene at 7:10 down there for a study session. All right, welcome back. Next up is a study session about the council priorities update, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. So as we come back in from, from summer recess, it was time, it was time for a little homework. So we have been periodically, every six months or so, looking to bring council an update on, on your council priorities. And of course, there's also just the natural rhythm of many of your priorities require council meetings, so you hear updates on specific projects. But we wanted to, to zoom out and especially as we're coming up on the final months of this set of priorities, they were adopted in, in June about two and a half years ago. So as we come up to the next June, that would be three years, just to make sure that we're all on the same page of, of what's going on. So that's what we'll do tonight. We're joined tonight, so the presentation on the priorities themselves will be made by myself and then Assistant City Manager Becky Range. But we're also, it's kind of a two-for-one presentation tonight too because as I'll, I'll share a little bit more, we're also going to have an update about a dashboard to help track progress towards achieving the council vision that you've set out. And so for that part of the presentation, I'm joined by Sarah Burns, G I S analyst, as well as Catherine Jansen, our executive assistant to the city manager. No actions required tonight, so this really is update. But you'll note in, on the slides and in the materials in your packet tonight, there were some of the priorities that there's, there's a coding to things. So if things are on track or completed, if things are on our watch list or there's outside influences, but then also things that we'd be open to discussion of making sure that if there's decisions to make, we're all on the same page, this is what the icons will look like. So again, tonight, we're opening with this background and then we'll do the dashboard. And then as we go through the priority updates, we're going to be going through priority area by priority area. And then Becky was very, very kind to you of having two slides that are just the summary of any of the ones for discussion. So you don't have to like memorize them as they're going by. As, as you probably well know by now, I do remember, Councilmember Manki, I can remember your, your challenge to your colleagues and to, to the staff that were in the room for the retreat where this was, where this, the genesis of this happened was our deputy city manager and I unknowingly just Pavlovian spouted out another city's opening statement to a vision and you were like, I want that. And so we now have borrowed from current vernacular in Bothell anyway for a day or for lifetime, but then added on, no matter who you are or where you've come from, Bothell is everyone's hometown. So again, as we're looking to try and achieve that, there's a number of steps and they're certainly, we're not going to make that true for everybody in three years, I wish we could. But instead, it'll be a series of priorities and every, every few years, council will have the opportunity to make decisions about what are the next big steps that we need to take towards creating that reality. So with that, there are the, as we refer to, the seven council vision areas, connecting neighborhoods from one city, economic vitality, a community of trust and respect, a joyful and healthy way of life, building Bothell's beloved community, environmental stewardship, and moving in and around Bothell. So what I mentioned that we're going to have a preview of the dashboard, I'll just note that a few months into having the, the council vision, Catherine made the mistake of asking me one day, I need a project, which she sometimes does. And so I threw at her of like, well, here's the most important thing to me is I think we need to develop a dashboard to be able to track the council vision. And what's great about it is once you have the platform set up, this is something that as the vision evolves and as priorities change, some of these metrics will be evergreen. If we can look at things, we can look at trends over time and we can update what we're measuring at the same time too. And Catherine has just done, in my preamble, I'll just note, she's done an exceptional job working with the entire executive leadership team, but really has been our, our coach and our reminder of getting this, to this point of identifying with staff in every department, what are the things that we, we currently measure or should be measuring that really speak to the progress of the vision? And then really led an effort to collect an insta, stable internet as well as visualization of data and, and moving this forward. And then our, our teammates in I T have been a great help and particularly in G I S of finding tools that we already own. So this is not a, not something that was a monetary outlet to, to make this happen. So I'll just note that before turning things over to Catherine and Sarah to lead the presentation, that this dashboard is now live for the community and yes, please do make the switch. It is on the council vision page. There are still some things that will improve along the way, but you know, that's, that's what we do in life, right, is we just get better. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Catherine and Sarah to drive us through the dashboard preview and then we'll jump back into the priorities.
Thank you, Kyle. You actually said a lot of things that I was going to say, so that cuts my, my speech short. But I would like to think we worked with a lot of staff. Our, our first task was to determine what measures did we want to show and display and how to, how to measure the progress of the priorities. And then we had to determine what data to show towards those measures. And then ultimately, like Kyle said, it involved staff members from all departments. And then we took our data and E T S Director Matt Pruitt, G I S Manager Darren Brown, G I S Analyst Sarah Burns, and I sat down and started getting creative on how to display it. And thanks to Darren and Sarah, we have our final product. It's, they've done quite a job. I want to thank them and all of the staff that helped with us and I'm excited now to let Sarah demonstrate the dashboard for you.
Thank you, Catherine. Good evening, everybody. Excited to be here to demo this new dashboard application for you. So first to note, this dashboard site application was created using the city's existing G I S software called ESRI or E S R I. So there's no extra cost to building it out. It's a sort of web application template, customizable, and it's basically made up of a, what they call a hub site. It's a website with dashboards, a series of dashboards. And it's displaying data that, as mentioned, was gathered from various city departments and is related to the council vision focus areas. So looking at the main page here, you see the seven focus areas here and here. So each one of these will link to a separate webpage with dashboard on it and metrics. And then we have the council city vision video here, YouTube video, give more information about that, and frequently asked questions. And then there's a link to the city webpage for the 2040 vision and strategic priorities. So I'll just go up here and go to one of these dashboard pages. And so each one of these pages has a little intro section talking about the metrics down below, and the metrics are here below. And below that, we have the 2040 vision focus area description and the strategic priorities with related links to relevant documents. And so I'll just go back up to here. So these metrics, or we call them data boxes too, they have these tabs here. So each of these metrics has a current tab, which will show the most recent measured value for each metric and when it was measured. And then each one will also have a details tab that shows a description of the data and any relevant hyperlinks. that shows a description of the data and any relevant hyperlinks. And so each of these current values, these current data measurements can be updated over time, ideally on a yearly basis is probably a good interval. And when you do that, you can add in a chart that shows the changes over time. So we had some historic data to add into this, for instance, that shows a yearly trends chart. So you can either show it as a line chart or you can show it as a bar chart. We have one here, it's a little bar chart there. So you'll notice, when you look at these, most of these are just one number, because we just got our numbers started in there. So they don't have a chart quite yet. But over time, as these are updated, we can add in charts. And also to note, we can add in other metrics, too, if we want to see those, or we can remove any we don't want to see anymore. So one other thing to note is that it's viewable on mobile view as well. So if you want to look at it on your cellphone, you're free to do that. So yeah, that's a brief overview.
Can you show one of the details tabs, too? Just to kind of show how, if people don't know what it means?
Yeah. Yeah, so these details, you can just switch between them, current and details. And every one of these has a details tab. And you know, there's links in there that will link to various things of relevance. Yeah, right. Yeah. So, yeah.
The dashboard in a nutshell?
Yes, in a nutshell.
This is so cool.
I did want to tell you the quick link. It's bothellwa.gov/dashboard.
I Googled it, and it just came up as the first link, so 2040, yeah. And it's actually on the mobile, it's actually easier to see than on desktop, which is cool. Is there, is the data somewhere where if somebody wants to do some analysis offline, is like in CSVs or whatever to download and just do much of crazy stuff? The geek is talking.
The data is, as yet, not collected nice and neatly. But I think anybody could access, for somebody to access it and really make sense of it, that might be challenging. But if they have questions, we're certainly happy to share it.
So somebody manually has to, on a regular basis, you or yourself, you have to go and collect all the data and just input it into a database and then spit something?
Currently, this is a manual system, yes. We're not, we're not-
Okay, which is fine for version one.
We're very jealous of the police dashboard that's linked to NORCOM data and updates.
We'll get there.
Yes.
Deputy Chief. This is really cool. So thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. I was showing Councilmember Aldrichs, there was on the Connecting Neighborhoods, it's like, it hits you in the face, that 41% of renters or I guess are cost burdened, and this is from five years ago. It will be interesting to see, she was telling me it actually went up from five years ago. Yeah, so it's just shocking. So it means, it helps us add urgency to the work we're doing, you know? So looking at this data even for us, not just for the community.
If we're not asking a ton of questions, it's because we're all looking at the dashboard, just to be totally clear.
And Catherine's like, "I'm done, let me get out of here."
Tonight, I'm going to be like, "I wish I would have asked this." Thank you.
And thanks for joining us, both of you.
Yes.
I've tried and make a habit of noting first council meetings, too, and that was Sarah's first time joining us and not Catherine's first time, but first time in a long time, so it's good to have her.
Are you ready for like random requests for like different pieces of data that you want to see on this when one of us just thinks up something, "Hey, I wonder what, hey, you know what would be cool?"
I know, I know what we bought. Absolutely. So for the remainder of today, what we wanted to focus on, too, is the priorities themselves. And so attachment, the second attachment in your packet, we'll have this information with a little more narrative of things that are going on. But I'm going to cover the first two and then hand things over to Becky. So first of all, Connecting Neighborhoods for One City. So there's definitely a theme in many of these priorities where there was a first step in our reports back to you of, first step was completion of the comprehensive plan. And certainly in Connecting Neighborhoods for One City, there was an aspect of that. But fortunately, then the comprehensive plan is done, so implementation's underway. Some of the things that came out of that were related to of putting the focus on implementation steps of the Housing Action Plan, which, as you should know, is underway, as well as looking at downtown, the downtown plan. Council, you'll also remember that last year, or earlier this year, in the discussions about comprehensive plan amendments, there was a conversation about Canyon Park. And so staff did suggest that instead of looking at a property in the Canyon Park subarea, we look at an overall update next year. So that is one where there was talk in the priorities around identifying different areas of the city and needs and that sort of thing. So Canyon Park will be the first area of focus. So again, will the entire city be done in this three-year period? Probably not. But again, we've worked with you to try and prioritize what are the most important ones. The other aspect that I would note is that one of the priorities themselves was doing an assessment to develop a plan to address needs, including infrastructure, housing, transportation, parks, community spaces. So a big thing, and yet, that is, a match of that work is what goes on during the budget development, particularly with capital facilities plans. So again, the needs that we're seeing in terms of infrastructure throughout the community, those are things that then will be great opportunities for council to speak into, hopefully the comprehensive plan and the associated work are helping highlight where are those needs going to be. And then we prioritize them against everything else for the community and the budget. Second area of focus, of course, this is where I leave off because I'll take the ones where things are all green. But that's not really, that's not really the full intent. But that's right, economic vitality. We were thankful for the adoption of the Economic Vitality Plan here recently. And again, that now, the direction for the priority was to create it. Now we're going to keep driving it. So there was action steps that'll continue on. But from the standpoint of your priority, like, that's done, that's now in the work plan, and you get to tell us what else you want us to work on. There was, again, it's funny to think back to when we were doing this, but part of it was around, again, strengthening the relationships with Cascadia and Uta-Bothell leadership and making sure that we had more connections and how do we look at strategies? And how do we work together to think about the economic opportunities within our community? And so a lot of that comes up in terms of meetings with businesses, but also meeting with each other. And we have continued through this whole process of I meet quarterly with the chancellor of Uta-Bothell and the Cascadia president to really highlight what are the things on our work plans that might be impacting each other and helping increase the coordination, which has been a great relationship and very much appreciated. And then the other things, the other big area of focus was around long-range financial plan for budget stabilization. And I think there's mutual interest for all of Bothell around, let's not, while we may have trends, that data trends that can show that there's fluctuation, let's try and keep the implementation lines smooth so that we're not having spinning up lots of programs and then pulling them back, or starting something and having to stop it based on economic conditions. But how are we putting together factors of a group of tools? And at the time that this priority was created, council had been briefed on a number of financial tools and opportunities. And we've been working over the course of the last few years to move forward on those, including have, again, one of the things that was an area of focus was what's going to happen with the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy. And the voters of Bothell will tell us that on the aforementioned November 4th. So we'll get a report back on that soon. With that, now I'll turn things over to Becky.
Some key updates for the Vision Area, Community of Trust and Respect. As we mentioned, I think in previous updates, we have made a lot of progress on our engagement strategy here at the city. We do have an engagement toolkit that each, I would say each month, is, you see more signs of it being actually implemented in the work that we do, which is really exciting. We've made a lot of strides on language access improvements. I would say a few years ago, when we're planning engagement work and conversations and meetings with the community, we didn't always even think about in-language. Now, we don't always, we don't even just think about it, but we actually plan for it. We're sophisticated about what languages we should be providing interpreters and translations for. And now we're actually planning for that work into our budget process. So it's been quite a cycle for language access. We have, you've seen us do more open houses and workshops and those sorts of things to talk with the community. But we've also recently formalized one of your council engagement events that you would like to do to get more out in the community and talk to folks where they are. And your next council in the community is scheduled for September 27th, I believe, at the Senior Center. We have made great progress in the implementation of our DEI roadmap. You also, those updates have been weaved in different policy or plan updates that you've heard over the last year. But we are very excited to give you an update in October, an annual DEI update, where we will talk more about the DEI Advisory Committee or Council that's been formed. If you'll remember, you accepted staff's recommendation to form that committee, and they are advising staff. And they have met actually four times now, and it's been really great. The composition's been great. Our DEI Coordinator Gabby has been actually bringing in department directors and the city manager and different guest speakers to talk with the advisory committee and to seek their feedback and answer questions. And it's going really, really well. So we're excited for you to hear that update and more of that in October. One of the items that we talked about in our Vision Area and our strategic priorities was the need for better community demographics and reports. And you see some of that reflected in the dashboard. But we did update our demographics report, and this was kind of a team effort. The Community Development Department had a lot of new demographics provided to them throughout the comp planning process, which was great. And so we combined some of that information but published kind of an easy-to-read, easy-to-see community demographics report that will always be published on the website so that, for one thing, all of staff are looking at the community demographics and letting it guide our work, that we're all on the same page. And then also for you, if you'd like to go out and see what those demographics are. And those are now published. One of the items, we'll talk a little bit more later, is we were tasked to take a look at the land action boards that are out in the community. And we took it a little bit step further and have really started talking about an overall signage strategy and physical signage package that should be considered if we are really to communicate with the entire community in lots of different ways. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Joyful and Healthy Way of Life. The PROS Plan has been kicked off June of 2025. Nick and his team have done a great job there, and they're really in the process of gathering data and doing a lot of that foundational work. You have seen Parks' efforts at the Park at Bothell Landing and several meetings over the last few months. And they've really done a phenomenal job with that work. And they are now in the final design and permitting phase. We have made a lot of strides and done many new joint multicultural events. One of the things that became pretty evident to staff as we talked about, how do we incorporate more diversity and multicultural education into our community events? We realized we support community partners in all these slots of little ways, but we didn't really have one joint policy that helped set criteria and guide staff as they do these things to support community groups. So for the last several months, multiple staff members and departments have been collaborating on a community partnership policy. And we are very excited to have more of a final draft of that policy. And you'll hear more about that in the fall. But it ranges from anything as small as when you request staff to come out and to participate at one of your events, or perhaps staff is pitching in a little bit of money. Say, for example, North Creek Juneteenth event, we're coming, but we're also going to give you a little bit of funds to help with your event. And then it just can kind of grow from there. Are we cosponsoring an event together? And then much, much later, we'll actually dive into more potential funding partnerships so that we can help small and large community groups or organizers actually do things in our city and our community. We have been supporting your effort to join in with the regional effort to build a youth community center with the NPRSA and our board members that are there. That effort is moving along, and we are participating and supporting that study. But it really is a little bit dependent on November levy results as the NPRSA has their traditional levy on the ballot in November. So we kind of need to see what happens there. And also, the Parks levy that we are thinking about or planning for is also a little bit dependent on November levy ballots that we have. Building Bothell's beloved community. We have started a brand-new DEI foundational series for staff. And I just have to tell you, it is a great curriculum that our DEI coordinator put together. And it is taught in this room often. And one of the recent sessions was taught out at the BAC. And there's always a great number of staff that attend. We opted not to make that training mandatory, and we really wanted to see how staff would respond. It is conversational, it's an open training, and it is really amazing. And I have to give really kudos to Gabby for putting that together. And that is well underway. There's also a Phase Two of the staff training program that digs a little bit deeper into more controversial topics or more sensitive topics that you need your first baseline DEI knowledge before you can transition to that. But that'll be coming soon. You probably remember that we have talked quite a bit about the new Behavioral Health Services Clinic. That was in a very exciting effort. It took a little bit of time to put in place. That behavioral health contract has been executed with the YMCA, and we are talking with them daily. And you'll see a lot more information on that as well. I think there's a human services update coming to you in about a month. We'll hear more about that. Related to the Behavioral Health Services Clinic, we did bring to you the opioid settlement strategy, which you approved. And there's a lot of services that are connected, not only with the clinic, but with our educational partners out in the community to help with opioid addiction. One of the things we'll talk a little bit more about, our staff has been working with the King Center for quite some time. And in the beginning, we weren't sure if the King Center had educational resources or training that was a great fit for municipality or policy work. But we've been working with them on that. But we'd like your direction at the end of this presentation. We have a few questions for you. One of the items that was also in the Vision Area and Strategic Priorities, community and/or neighborhood coalitions. And we just have a few questions about that from a staff perspective. We have not done much on that yet, but we just have a few questions of how we might focus our efforts there. Environmental stewardship. The Storm and Surface Water Master Plan update is coming to you, actually, I think in a couple of weeks, for council consideration. The Urban Forestry Management Plan is underway. Master planning for the former Wayne Golf Course has already kicked off. The Climate Action Plan is nearing completion, which is very exciting. We'll talk a little bit more about Shelton View. It is the top item on our legislative agenda. And we'll talk a little bit more about the Trust Land Transfer Grant. And that application is due. And staff's been doing an amazing job on that and working with community partner on that. And also, staff attended a tribal relations training. We, there were several departments, actually, that attended that training. We published some best practices for indigenous and tribal community engagement. But we do still have a lot of work to do on our tribal relationships. and differentiating between tribal engagement and tribal consultation and to make sure we're doing that all the right way. So we're still working on that. I feel like I'm just rambling on and talking a lot, so it's just a lot of material to cover, so please interrupt me if you need to. Okay. Moving in and around Bothell, the Transportation Safety Plan has been updated. The first package of improvements was completed first quarter of 2025. You will be hearing more about downtown parking enforcement. Couple of weeks, there's a scoping discussion coming before you. The same with the micro mobility strategy. The community engagement effort was already completed. They identified seven topics for consideration, and you'll be hearing a staff update on that soon. We also are still doing some work on drafting a pilot program to address lowering of the residential speed limits to 20 miles per hour. We have a little bit to talk about on that effort, as well as the Bothell Circulator Bus feasibility. October 7th, staff will be coming to present options there as well. All right, that was a lot. Do you want me to go ahead and?
So I think, yeah, at this point, we do have this slide and the next slide to capture what are the things that we identified as for discussion. But we probably have a few that are near and dear to your heart, too. So I'm just looking for any feedback again from council tonight on if there's anything to refine or if you heard something that you're like, that doesn't track with my expectation. This is a good time. We'd rather be finding out now than next year.
I have a quick question about the signage package you mentioned. Does that include like the welcome to Bothell signs and all that? Or just the informational signs?
No.
No. So you've mentioned that in meetings, but haven't actually, like, there has not been direction to say we want to commission a project.
Well, it was in the parking lot from our last retreat, I know, but we didn't finish the retreat and all that jazz, so.
So it's certainly something that we can do, but that, really, it was literally seen as what is the replacement for the use of how are we communicating information about what's going on with the city? So it would be, good clarification.
And that signage package, we want it to be thorough. We know that there are new digital kiosks that we see out in different places, and we believe that we should really be smart about that technology. And if we strategically place some digital kiosks in some high-visibility areas, but then also combine, you know, there's still great value in having banners and even yard signs and things like that. And it's a package of physical signage that we need to kind of address together. That's what that's about.
As a spoiler alert, the deputy mayor jokes about being a former tech worker. I don't like the idea of digital signs. I think they get outdated. They're very easy to ignore. There's a lot more troubleshooting that goes into it day to day. So I'd be a hard sell on that.
Could you spell that for me?
No.
I don't have much to say, except wow, what an amazing amount of progress staff has made on our behalf over the past couple of years. I wasn't here to develop the strategic priorities, but I agreed to them when I came on implicitly. Explicitly, I did give consent. And I am star of the video, let's be honest. So I, I'm really, it makes me really proud to see this list of green check marks, but also to see that there are some orange dots. Because you're continuing to check in with us, and that really honors the kind of agreement that we have between the branches here. And I'm encouraged to have the discussion later, but I just picked up the microphone, so now I have to say something.
It's very exciting to see a tracker version of this that I think I've looked forward to this presentation for a long time because, you know, also shout out to Ashish for finishing the economic vitality work. I know that wasn't just you. I know that the finance department was very involved in that as well, but that, I think that's a big accomplishment. And overall, each department of the city has worked to accomplish some, but not all of the goals. And the ongoing work is really interesting. One question I have is, and maybe you just need to refresh my memory. What, what were we talking about when we said community and/or neighborhood coalitions?
Yeah, having been in the room, y'all were too, so not all of you, sorry. Many of you were. So I think, I think the thought of that was is having formalized record, recognized neighborhood association type of things so that as there were issues that came up in the community, who would you go to? I think, so that was, that was the general, the general reminder that I, or memory that I have, but you all can figure that out, too. I think we do face a couple of challenges with that of, number one is that there are, we don't have formalized large group of neighborhoods. So that was something Jason's off to a planning director's conference, so he's not here tonight. But I do remember him asking that question when we met as staff to review the draft priorities right away was. You know, we could look at the subareas, and then you could start getting into a manageable number. But some, some parts of the city have recognized neighborhoods. Not all of them do. There's a lot of them, what would be, you know, would, would, would all voices participate in that? Would, where would marginalized voices, would they feel comfortable being part of that? So it was, it was something, though, that what we decided was, okay, well, as the first step is, we got to do the comp plan. And in that, we're going to like revisit the subareas and look at that. And we'll see if different identities come out of that after that. But we are kind of at a point of where that one is one that we definitely would like some feedback of what would that look like? And is that maybe a not now, not yet, or is that a, on further review, there's other ways that we want to hear from the community?
Is it okay, like, is, are my colleagues okay with having that conversation now? Can we like open that up, or do you want to come back to it at some point?
I'd want to come to it with ideas of what happens in other cities, because I feel like the ones I'm aware of don't really translate to Bothell very well. I, I don't know, I need to research more, but it's always been kind of a nebulous concept for me. And I was ambivalent about it at the retreat, and I'm ambivalent now. I, living on the edge of a neighborhood personally, I always joke, I live where like Shelton View and Queensborough, Canyon Park meet. So I'm like, I don't know, this is where, like, it's just not, I don't feel like, I, thinking about like where you live, you're in the middle of a specific neighborhood versus like, I just wonder how that would translate across the city.
And, and I kind of feel like, you know, looking at how it's presented now, that this doesn't match my understanding of what I agreed to. And so I would, like, if I could just briefly share, like, when we talked about neighborhoods, I, to me, this neighborhood piece was very connected to the signage piece, where we have the, the signage or the upcoming events, local action signs, not, not for, not for like projects that are being built, but like over right in front of Doug Allen and in front of Franklev Elementary, there's these like neighborhood alert signs or whatever they're, they're called. That's what I was thinking of, is making sure that every neighborhood had one accessible to them and that they were updated and had relevant pertinent information to the community on it. That, that's what I had in mind when we were talking about like neighborhoods. And so that neighborhoods felt like there was staff reaching out and providing information that could make each neighborhood more connected to what's going on in the city. And then some of the like City Hall to the People type things, which we're doing with the council and the community. And so I definitely know that in a neighborhood association, which I think some of them were just outlawed by the legislature, is not the vision I was going for. It was more, how do we better communicate with our neighborhoods so that, and that neighborhoods feel like they have a space on those boards to put information that's relevant to their community, like to their, you know, neighboring streets. And that, that's what I had in mind, so.
I think that, yeah, that makes sense for the boards. I want to make sure we're talking about the same one. So within Building Bothell's beloved community, the second priority is develop program designs, ideas that would support the development of community and/or neighborhood coalitions that can have dialogue regarding needs, concerns, and actions. So I think that that was the one that you were, you were asking about, yeah.
Yeah, and so if I.
But definitely, yeah, like, what I, before we hear from other colleagues, what, what I'm hearing from you is, is that the core of the goal would be around, how do we make sure that different area, all areas of the city have the opportunity to engage and be informed? That's kind of like the, the heart of the matter, what vehicle that takes place, that's.
Yeah, and I think that there is a broader conversation, but that was the one that I was like, you know, the neighborhood coalition was just a little like skip in my step, right? Like, not like, like skip on the, on the record. Anyway, record scratch, there we go. Then one other question that I have is, I think this progress tracker is actually super helpful. And I'm wondering, is this or a version of it going to be added to the priorities dashboard so that people can see the progress made towards each of the goals on the dashboard, too?
Yeah, that's something we can definitely talk to the team about, and like, what's the easiest way to show the information and for people to be able to see it and follow it?
Sure, cool. Thank you so much. And then I did notice, as I followed along in your presentation, the demographics page link is not found on the website. And so can we make sure that that link is working? Because I'm super excited to see it. I would love to see what's on there. But right now, I'm getting a message that says, we're sorry, but there is not a webpage matching your entry.
We'll definitely take a look at that. I know with the new dashboard, there were a lot of updates to make sure that all the data matched each other. So may just be something like that.
Yep. And that, that's sort of, and then the last one is with the levy proposals, it sounded like there was more than one, a Parks levy and a community center levy with, that was being considered for future. Not, obviously not this election cycle, but a future election.
Yes, just for the future. It's dependent on the first NPRSA levy.
Okay, and that would, that's two are in mind? Those would be separate, not combined?
Oh, absolutely, two separate things.
And the, just to put a finer point on it, too, at the, memory is funny because it's, it feels like a lifetime ago. But at the time, the, the conversation about supporting a regional center, there were two projects that were under consideration, or multiple efforts that were under consideration, including there were some neighboring jurisdictions, including Kirkland and Kenmore and Shoreline, who had come together to look at, was there a way of joining forces of thinking about an aquatics facility? And as, as often can happen, it's difficult. These are, those are difficult choices. So that effort has, has been done. I believe council received an update on that. So we had that, and then there was also NPRSA was having a journey of conversations about, would there be a community center for youth? At the time, it was the Community Center for Youth Excellence, and then I'll let NPRSA board member speak into that one. But again, that, that, for the council priority of joining into regional efforts, that's the one that's remaining. So we won't join a failed effort. We'll join that one if, as long, as long as possible. But yeah, I think on their timeline, as the executive director of NPRSA just mentioned, that is Becky Range, by the way, that they have a continuation of funding the existing facility, the Senior Center that's here in Bothell. That's going to be in November, and that was the priority before going out to ask about future opportunities. But there is work going on around that.
I just wanted to sneak in real quick to talk about the last thing we were talking about with the community and/or neighborhood coalitions. City Manager, I know you and I have been talking about like what a, you know, what kind of looking at this again, what another council retreat looks like. And then that seems like a good thing to like table work on right now until we have a chance to discuss that more thoroughly at an upcoming retreat. So we can, because if I were you guys, I wouldn't really feel great about working on this after this discussion because like we don't even know what we want, so.
I mean, that's the great thing about, about these, being able to look back is that the point in time of what, what seems important, like, that's where really the, the right priorities definitely boil top. And again, there was a need, the interest is making sure that the community is, is heard, and there may be a better strategy of, absolutely. So yeah, saying that we defer any future work on that until there's a future retreat and to see if there's a priority that also accomplishes that, certain, certainly we would take that feedback.
Awesome.
Can I second that? I know it's not a proposal, but I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
I was just going to jump in for the community center levy. That's right now just NPRSA. And to fund the ongoing like capital maintenance and fixes, for lack of a better, I'm like, jump in if there's a better word, for the, the Health and Wellness Center and the Senior Center, that's what, that's the levy you'll see on your ballot in November. And then fully separate from that is we're exploring as NPR, as the NPRSA Board, should we float a levy for community center? What would it fund? What would that look like? So it's important to the Senior Center and the NPRSA that that's separate, so it's not one ballot measure. And then also, we're just not there yet with what it would cover. But it wouldn't be just Bothell. And then the Parks levy, because there's the King County Parks levy, which I don't vote on as a San Antonio resident, but that just happened in August. And then the Parks levy is, is an idea not fully formed yet about a future funding park stuff. So it's kind of like, those are intricate things, but I know we like the details.
Yeah, well, thanks for clarifying that. That matches my understanding, but I think it's, it's good to have it stated clearly for those who are listening. Thank you.
And I'm also in favor of tabling the neighborhood, that stuff for the next retreat.
Whatever it was that we wanted a few years ago, that we don't remember what we wanted now.
I do believe that these are presentations that are already coming to you. And I believe staff has a great idea of what you need to hear on those or what feedback we might need from you. But if you have any questions about these, we're happy to take those.
There was one that, of course, is going to catch my eye around the King Center. I'm sorry. And from what I was hearing from staff, the, while, while there was great intention, it's not panning out operationally to make it happen. Is, like, are you going to come back to us at some point with like recommendations for alternatives? Or is that something you want to talk about?
We can definitely do that. I mean, we have incorporated many components and elements of the beloved community. We've incorporated into the MLK Annual Event. It's in, the principles ideals are incorporated into our training, you know, that we do, but it's just getting the King Center to coordinate with us on any potential training opportunities that they have has been challenging. So I do think we have other training resources in the area. We have national associations that we're a part of. I think we might be at a point where we look at some different training options and resources and bring that back, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I definitely want to see what the options are. And, and you know, in the off chance that something works out with the King Center, that would be great.
One quick comment on the micro mobility on the next page. I know it's coming back, but one thing I'd like to see in proposals, if we're going to consider keeping the Lime scooters and bikes, which I think are helpful. I like seeing them about. I think everybody's biggest complaint about them is blocking sidewalks, blocking access for strollers, wheelchairs, pedestrians. So if we're going to propose something around that, I would love to see us think about where can we put concrete pads in, you know, medians, off the sidewalk. A lot of cities that, a lot of larger cities that do those have restricted parking for those things. So I'd love to see us think about that, incorporate that into our process. And then one other thing is safety with those. I know a lot of people don't wear helmets when they're riding them. We did have, I believe, a fatality or close to a fatality over by Popkinie not long ago sometime this year. So we need to think about that as well. Like, how can we encourage safe? I mean, you can drive it safe or ride it safe, but you just never know when it's going to hit a bump or something that knocks you off of it. And then you end up going over the top or off the side and get really hurt. So think about safety and how we can make sure that we're being as safe as we possibly can when people are riding those.
Great feedback. Thank you.
I, I like the idea. I would say just paint a rectangle. Don't add more concrete. Don't add more cost. Just paint a rectangle. Just because I, the more barriers we have, the harder it is to do, so.
We'll put it right next to the digital signboard.
Kyle.
Actually, the rectangle is digital.
We need a digital signboard to point people toward the rectangle.
We need a digital signboard to point people toward the rectangles.
And the panel, those are actually solar panels within the boxes.
I am really encouraged by this and I'm really happy that we got this presentation. I would love to know more and not right now about the first and package of safety improvements. I don't know how much of that is like the things that have happened in downtown. Like I know like the, the bulb outs and like, there's been some really cool stuff happening. And I, like, I would just, if there's cool stuff happening, I'd like to know about it. But, but overall, like I, this is, it's really encouraging just to see like how many things we're making progress on over time. Because I mean, you, it's no secret, I always think that nothing's happening. And that's not, I always feel like I'm not doing anything either. It's not an indictment on anybody else. It's just my weird brain. So it's really fun to see just like, okay, like things are happening. Lots of things are happening over time. It works and nothing happens right away. But, so just, I, thanks. And I would love to know a little bit more about those safety things because that's really cool.
Yeah, this has been like super excitingly fast, like for a lot of this work, which is really cool. I realize I've been asking questions and stuff, but like also like super kudos to everybody who's worked on this. Also with the circulator bus, I haven't used it. So I'm just like remembering what I read in some articles and stuff, but Bellevue has something where you use an app and you summon a thing. I don't know what kind of thing, but some kind of vehicle that takes you somewhere within Bellevue. So it'd be, when we get our circulator bus feedback, it'd be good to, if there's other stuff like that, just make sure it's like a comparison and like what's possible too.
Yeah. She, she's actually been educating a few of us about the Bellevue circulator bus. And it's been really helpful.
Cool.
I saw it today as I was walking through town.
What is it?
It started out as like a, a stretched golf cart that was enclosed and now it's an actual vehicle. So I don't know if they have multiple now, but yeah, it's, it's always driving around.
I'm just thinking like three city pedicabs that just, you know, electric bicycles.
I think we, what we'll bring back to is the percentage of funding of what, what comes from where, because it's not city.
I am, I am super joking, by the way.
No, I mean, I think that is actually one of the ones that, you know, at the very least, it's, it's an opportunity where the city has influence that we can have. Again, we recently had a conversation about King County Metro and providing feedback. And then we're also, I met this summer, actually during summer recess with the government relations person for community transit to remind that they do have a last mile pilot program that they've put into some communities and suggested that even if we needed to have a conversation about how the city could be part of that budgeting, like that would be something we'd be interested in. So I mean, that's an opportunity is where we look at the existing transit operators all the way up into where the city incentivizes a third party to, for circular buses all the way to. And you could have a conversation about, does the city start our own transit agency? But that's also like, that's, that's big dollars, big brain stuff. So what, the, there's always the option, and again, of fulfilling the council priority. We'll, we'll put whatever effort into it. Probably not one that's going to be solved in the three years, but it is at the point where now like, yeah, we want to provide some updates and then see what sticks.
The pessimist in me thinks that neither transit agency will do the last mile program here because we're cut right through the middle. So maybe they could just kick in some dollars to our own program instead. Optimism.
General question from what you mentioned earlier, this is two and a half years since we did this, right? Or plus or minus?
Yeah, it was in, it was in June. So the retreat was like in the first quarter and then we worked a little bit on it.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two? Yeah. No, twenty-three. Cause I, I was twenty-two. So yeah, twenty-three.
So when are we due to update, to go through review, the, the year after next?
Yeah. Great question. So we, the stride of doing this was a little different in that it was done on an off budget year and that sort of a thing. I think what, what will make sense is that like going forward, I think three-year priorities, I think there is some magic to that because some of them, like two years is the other number you can go to, but two years is real quick. And at least three years, if not completed, you at least can see what's worth continuing. So I think tonight's conversation, it's recent, it's, it's confirming my bias, whether it's right or not, but that's, that's how I see it. So, but I think every two years, then reviewing the three-year priorities to see where things are at in a retreat format. So the intent would be is sometime in the first-ish quarter of next year to look at it and say, okay, now we can really see the finish line of the three years. If we pull off everything that's completed, what capacity does that create? And if there are any ideas council will have. And then we would follow a similar practice of what we did this time of meeting as staff. It was our ELT plus some subject matter experts, depending on, we had to be a little nimble because we didn't know what the priorities were going to be, but we were able to convene a large group of staff and work on some proposed work plans to bring back to you. And that's, that's the work that we intend to do. So that was a long answer for what you asked. Ultimately, I think probably the end of the first quarter, beginning of the second quarter of next year would be the time to say what, what moves forward.
Okay. So the plan is on a budget year, that's one, which makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, then that gives the opportunity to have resourcing. Again, the budget is your document. So we can always, that's, that's always a choice that you have. But I think to be able to have staff some response time to see what are the council priorities, what's still coming back. I think one thing that we'll be better at going forward is also being able to, if there's anything, like, I mean, I'll, I'll pick on the thing that we talked about, the developed program design ideas of community and/or neighborhood coalitions. That was one that from the beginning, we were like not sure on. I think if that was to happen the next time, there'd be a higher level of confidence from staff of being able to come back and raise their hand and say, we're not sure what this means. And so, you know, I think, I think we'll get better and better at this.
Well, there's that and, because you think priorities, every two years, you know, priorities will shift. Staff will say, hey, this thing happened. What do you, and then sometimes we make requests or you come up with that require funding. So do you put it on the, as a priority to get funded for the upcoming biennial, you know, so, or biennium, I guess. So it's a, it's a good, I think it's a good plan. Yeah. I approve.
I have a clarifying question on Shelton View. I know that it's on the top of the legislative agenda. Do you anticipate that we're going to hear back about the trust land transfer process by the start of session in January?
Yeah, I'd make the same, probably not. But what, what came out of that, just as a refresher too, is that, yeah, actually definitely, as I put it in context, probably most definitely not. But some of the feedback that we've received is that while Shelton View doesn't necessarily compete well in that process, if it's not on the list, it doesn't compete at all. And so putting it on there and making sure again, that we're adequately having the opportunities to tell the stories of, of doing that. And again, I've spoken to a few of you, but we're also then working with our state lobbyists to make sure that we do have a land, new lands commissioner, having that, inviting him to come up this fall, see the land, understand what we're talking about, see opportunities and maybe have some of our other delegation or from Olympia join in a, in a, in a visit there, that sort of a thing of really putting clarity around what Shelton View is and what the opportunities are and what we're considering.
Great. I think I like, not that we can't talk about it before then, but we'll need to be pretty flexible and nimble during the legislative session to react to any changes that happen to DNR in the updated budget, but also to the outcome of that application. So I think we should talk about strategy on Shelton View in January or quarter one, just to keep it, keep our strategy consistent among council and figure out what the best motivators are and, and what some of the barriers might be coming up in January. So it's not envisioned to be a very flush year for the state budget. And so if there are additional cuts, we want to make sure to, that Shelton View is preserved and also, you know, comes out with an agreeable outcome if this is the defining legislative session. This has been on the, been on the agenda for a while and we haven't really told the story, but I think it would behoove us to be on the same page and be able to tell a good story next year. And then I wanted to bring up the King Center, but I know that's something that's close to your heart. So I'm wondering if maybe we can talk about that now before, sort of moving on.
Go for it. Happy to hear your thoughts.
Yeah. So if we've been unable to make progress with King Center, I think that we can be flexible and find other alternative partners that can do this type of work. I don't know if we ever had a kind of a line with King Center, if it was just an opportunity that came up during a, a moment in time. But I'd be interested in hearing what city staff members who are engaged in human services work and in maybe resources that might be even local or regional that could, could, could perhaps provide training. So I don't think that I'm married to King Center and it'd be easy for me to say, I don't have any history with them. And so I think it'd be easy for me to say, anybody else who could provide that training would be just as good. So.
I'm pretty in line with what council member Curd suggested. I think also for me, a priority is getting to where we have a program where we can run our boards and commission members and our council through so that as we, as, as those of us who are in a position to make recommendations and changes in the city, we, we're informed on how to do that equitably in the best way possible.
We've actually been having a lot of conversation with Gabby and some other liaisons about how we might tailor and offer training to, and incorporate into the new boards and commission onboarding process. And we've had a lot of conversations about training. All of you are pretty far along in your DEI journey and educated in many ways. And so we struggle a little bit with, you know, making recommendations for training for you because you just kind of often are a little bit educationally more aware, but it is something that staff's talking about and that we're discussing. And I do want to say that over the last probably 18 months, there have been a lot of staff and presentation trainings that have been really, really great. And I know that you don't always hear about them, but it's almost like we really wanted to focus on staff and build our knowledge and our understanding. And sometimes when we bring in a guest speaker for training, they are phenomenal and amazing. And we all look at each other and we're like, how can we bring this person in to do more training with our boards or commissions or our council or our community members? But it, we, we really were focused on our staff and our learning. I hope that makes sense.
No, it totally does. I know I try to be conscious that a lot of the training I've gotten is either self sought out, right? And there's some confirmation bias there, or it's through a job at a corporation who has a certain lens to DEI training. So it's, I'm great, I'm glad to hear that there's been other training going for staff too, because that is important. I just think setting that sort of level playing field is also helpful because a lot of it is stuff I think we've done either through our, our day jobs, for lack of a better term, full-time work or like self sought out. And yeah.
You got, are you good? Oh, Jenny has something to say.
I'll, I'll just say that each of these items that are marked for further discussion, I think are very appropriate. And I look forward to when they have their own time on the agenda to, you know, get an update and, you know, options presented to us so that we can give direction on how to move forward with them. So thank you for all of the work in this and for bringing it here. So.
And then as we close, the one thing I will confirm is that what I did here is then a strong sentiment too of in terms of, again, the, the neighborhood coalitions one, all of them will have an opportunity to be discussed except for that one. We'll wait for next year. So.
Thank you for the accuracy.
No, no, I just want to make sure.
Being very precise.
No, I want no surprises from anybody, but I don't see anybody objecting. So we will, we'll make that adjustment.
Perfect. I think we're good. And thank you to everybody who's watching. We see you. We appreciate you and for your work and help in all of this too.
This is definitely a, a whole city department, all the department effort. So thanks. See, almost, we said a lot of the department's represented back there right now.
And with that, we'll adjourn. Oh, two, oh. I got all excited. We are, it is now eight sixteen and council adjourn to closed session pursuant to RCW forty-two, three oh one, four zero, four A labor negotiations for twenty-nine minutes with no action. Council will adjourn from there at eight forty-five.